Okay, I'd like to call to order a board, a meeting of the Board of Selectmen for April 24th, 2017. If we could start by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd ever will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, the first item on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes from April 10th, our previous meeting, 2017. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes? And do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept the minutes from our prior meeting?
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Communications and announcements. First is a, one of these ones that we love to talk about is a, is a certificate of achievement of excellence for our financial reporting for FY16. If I can find that, I didn't be here to speak to that tonight. Andrew's not here, he's not here. Yeah, if you could fill in the blanks.
We're very proud that for the 50 in a row, the town has been recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association with the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is for FY16. As you realize, we're currently in FY17, and Lynn Savage, our finance director, has already started preparation to submit once again. It's probably about 30 communities in Massachusetts receive this kind of recognition. As I said, we've now received it for the 50th year in a row, and we're very proud of that fact, and we will continue to try to achieve it for the sixth, seventh, and so forth on.
Yeah, I wonder how many have achieved it that many years in a row? I know you said 30.
There's probably a handful, you know, the Cambridges of the world and stuff, because they do things at a much higher level. But it was one of the goals that we set when Andrew took over as town manager, and as I said, it's now been five fiscal years in a row that we've achieved this recognition.
Right, well, congratulations to Lynn and her entire staff. Again, a tremendous accomplishment, and we're very, very fortunate to have such a professional staff here in town and to achieve this award, or receive this award so many times. Let me, you. Okay, so, next on the agenda, we have the 2017 Summer Band Concert Series and Children's Shows, and we just happen to have with us today the Youth and Recreation Director, Rick Gorman. So, Rick, will you want to tell us about, just make, the men in tux will be back, right?
I think they will.
Is that your favorite?
It's just, it's been, they've been here for so long.
Coming around is our schedule for this year. Thanks for having me in here for a couple of things tonight, Stevens Pond, but also is we like to announce what we'll be having for our children's shows and the concerts on the Common. So, the schedule's C two-sided. One side will have the children's shows, the other side is the concerts. The concerts, once again, we've taken a look, we have a strong evaluation process we do after every summer, and there are certain bands that the community wants to make sure it comes back every year, like the German Hoffen Brauf Band, all 18 pieces of them. And then we try to actually bring in some new bands. We have a lot of actually musicians in the North Andover area that we try to do it. So, we kind of try to mix it up a little bit every year, bring back some of the standards, as well as the different genres that people like. So, six o'clock from the Sundays after 4th of July up to the Sunday before Labor Day. We do have a rain, if there is a rain date, we do reschedule it during the week, but we've been really lucky, the last couple of years only to have one or two rain dates on the Sunday. Groups start getting on the Common around four o'clock, and then the show goes off at six till dusk, and it's been really well received. We averaged between 150 to 300 last year on Sunday nights, and Kyle's Rock did some good business at the ice cream place afterwards, so we're pretty excited about that. The children's shows, once again, Tuesday and Thursday on the Common. Once again, we try to take a look at our evaluation process every year and find out what the community liked, what they didn't like. Wayne from Maine will be coming here for the next 50 years, that's our most popular one. I still don't quite get it, but Wayne has an amazing following. We get about 300 to 400 kids and families that come to see Wayne from Maine. So, we always try to take a look at different types of activities, whether it's music, storytelling, puppets, magicians, and the like. So, another great job putting the schedule together by my staff. Funding from this comes in a couple of different ways. Our Sunday night brook skating that we do from November through February helps pay for this, as well as we do solicit from some of our businesses. St. Michael's Church always adopts one of the concerts, and I've been working with Assistant Town Manager Ray Santilli. We possibly will have a sponsor this year that will be taking care of a good chunk of some of the shows. So, between all of that, we're actually paid, and it does not cost to our community. So, again, it's great. If you ever go to the Common on Tuesday and Thursday at 10:00 a.m., you'll see a ton of people there. We do use a rain site for the children's show. We use the North Endover Middle School Blaisdell Center, so those are on rain or shine. And again, on the Sunday night concerts, we reschedule if there is a rain date. So, I think it's going to be a great night. Hope to see you guys there at some point in time, and if I have any questions, I'll answer them.
Looks like a good list of bands and performances. Really cool, very good. Any questions from anybody?
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. We'll see you in a little bit. Okay, next we have Grants Electric Vehicle and Charging Station and Streetlight LED retrofit. I can't pull up my document on this, so if anybody would want to speak to this, I'd appreciate it.
Sure, you can speak to it. So, a couple of grants I want to make the board aware of, at the next meeting, we'll be asking you to consent to agree to accept these grants. First is, it's not on here, because we've previously spoken about it, $169,000 grant that's part of the Green Communities Program. It's something that obviously the board is aware that we've been successful in achieving. We've got Green Communities status. So, in that vein, or continuing in that vein, Laurie's been working on some supplemental grants, one specifically to electric vehicles. Been fortunate enough to receive a grant, to be awarded a grant for the Mass Department of Environmental Protection for $15,000. $7,500 would cover the cost to install a charging station back here in Town Hall. That would cover the complete cost of the charging station. And $7,500 would be used to purchase, or toward the purchase of an electric vehicle, but also see using a portion of the Green Communities' funding for that purpose. So, Green Communities sometimes get confused with green initiatives, for instance, trees and plantings, but green in this case means reducing electricity, right? Reducing our power consumption. And so, one of those initiatives, we would see supporting the idea of having our, one of the four or five vehicles we use for our inspectors being an electric vehicle to reduce the consumption of electricity in the long term, excuse me, to reduce the consumption of gasoline in the long term. And so, we're proceeding down that program, down that road. And so, we'll be coming back at next meeting to have you accept this particular grant, again, $15,000 for that purpose. The next grant is something that's really exciting. It's really the second phase of our streetlight program. You may recall several years ago, we purchased our streetlights. We did that for two reasons. It was a little over $80,000. One was because it afforded us the ability to get a lower tariff or a lower rate on the streetlights. The simple payback on the streetlights of $83,000 or $84,000 was a little over two years. So, in simply two years, we were able to pay back the cost of, of the $83,000 or $4,000. And every year subsequent to that, the town is saving between $40,000 and $50,000 in streetlight costs. And so, over a 20-year period, you're talking about a million dollars in savings. Additionally, since we use a private contractor to replace the lights, every week that there are lights reported to that private contractor or through our website, those lights are repaired. We don't have to wait longer for those lights to repair. So, we find that we're better in terms of repairing the lights than we were when the utility owned them. The next step to that is to go to an LED product. On the long term, a lot of communities are going in this direction. If you go to an LED product, the cost of electricity drops again. Payback period is several years, I don't have the number directly in front of me, and also, as long-term maintenance, there's less maintenance associated with LED lights since they last longer. So, we would see using, if you notice in the second piece of this on the communication, is a $100,000 grant, $108,700 and some change. That represents about one quarter of the total cost for the streetlight conversion to LED. We would expect other grant proceeds to help further reduce that cost. We'd expect at least 50% of the cost to be covered by grant proceeds, if not more, maybe the second phase of the Green Communities. And in the long term, by converting to LED streetlights, we would end up further reducing the costs of streetlights on a budgetary basis. And again, I think in the long term, over a 20-year period, maybe looking at savings close to a million dollars. Pretty substantial stuff. So, wanted to make you aware of those grants, and be coming back at next meeting, looking for your support to accept those grants.
Great.
On a palow track, we have one more grant that's not in here that we'll be applying for, and that is to try to improve access to our town meeting and other public meetings, some hearing devices that would allow folks who attend public meetings and town meetings, if they needed some additional equipment to help them understand or hear what's happening at a meeting. Also, looking at the possibility of buying a Braille printer, which would allow us to convert some of our documents, including a town meeting warrant and otherwise in Braille format, to make that available for people who, who otherwise may not attend a town meeting or a larger meeting because they're unable to read the material that was available. So, that's another grant that we're pursuing at the current moment. It'll take another, maybe six weeks to submit that grant, and hopefully, if we're successful, we'll be awarded that grant.
All very exciting, and very green.
Very green.
Very green, that's the way we want to go. Okay, does anybody else have any communications or announcements?
We have names to share.
Sure.
It is, I feel like I say something every week, every meeting about this, but the North Andover Women's Club has their Shop Till You Drop event that will be at the Stevens Estate on May 18th, and it's great. It's a fun event from 5:00 to 9:00. Tickets are $5, and it was a great event last year, and we used that money for scholarships for kids. You might have seen recently in the paper, we, we raised money from a dance that was used for the go-bags that had been noted in the papers at the, for the police department. The Shop Till You Drop, this one, the money raised from this will go towards veterans. So, it's a really fun, unusual types of crafts and items that you don't see in your typical type craft store. So, it's at the beautiful Stevens Estate. Tickets, you can reach out to any member of the Women's Club, including myself, and, or they will also be sold at the door for $5.
Great, thank you. Very good cause, and from what I remember, last year was a great time.
It was fun. It was fun, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, our Earth Day, right? Our townwide Earth Day cleanup is the Sunday, the 30th. I know that we're asking, like, in past years, DPW has been really accommodating to residents who organized in their neighborhoods, and as long as you either swing by DPW and drop off the trash that you pick up, or call in advance to make them aware they will come and pick up. I know that Past Care Brogans has had a really active neighborhood that has done that playground. So, if you're interested, it's on Facebook, right? And then, do we still want them to email northandoversc@gmail.com? That's what the town of North Andover's Facebook page directs people to go, and RCP too.
Oh, we're directing everybody in terms of communication on those kinds of things?
Yep, so, great, we're asking people to call Town Hall or email northandoversc@gmail.com. 685-0950, extension 4400, extension 44010 is the phone number, but I just want to confirm because it's a town-sponsored event, that that's the private email that we're asking people to respond to.
We'll have to look at that particular email and make sure where it is.
Sustainability Committee?
Yep.
That would make sense.
Probably where it is.
We also do have the curbside pickup of yard waste on the week of 5/18 and 5/15, right? So, certainly.
Five eight.
Excuse me, I'm 5/8 and 5/15, thank you.
For those weeks, and it's on your regular trash day, right?
On your regular trash day, yes.
You can put out any type of yard waste, leaves, sticks, everything else. And also, the Seer Center is also open for people that want to bring it out to the Seer Center for drop-off, and I think the hours are on the website. I don't know them all, but they're on, you can easily find them on the North Andover website. And then finally, we have town meeting. We're going to have another selectmen's meeting before that, but just to let people know, we have a town meeting coming up on May 16th. So, we'll, we'll touch base on that again in the next couple of weeks, but mark your calendars.
The town meeting, Mr. Chairman, the town meeting warrant is directly in the middle section on the banner of the website, so if you go on the website and want to take a look at it, download it, look at it electronically, you can certainly find it there. It'll eventually make its way in the next couple of days through the library and other, you know, standard posting locations, if you're interested in a hard copy, but if you're interested in any electronic version, you can find that right on the website.
Okay. And I think the last thing would be the water quality report that was published recently. There's also copies of that out on the website. I, you know, from the report, North Andover has done very, very well with the water quality, and we've scored very high in a lot of areas. I think it's worth going out and taking a look at the report that's on the website. Okay, any other communications, announcements? All right, so we're going to move on to public hearings. We have one tonight, public hearing from National Grid and Verizon, New England Poll petition on Phillips Court. Do I have a motion to go into a public hearing?
No.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, okay, we are in a public hearing. Do we have a representative tonight?
Yes.
You could just state your name and...
Sure. My name is Paul O'Sathler. I'm an engineer for National Grid.
Hey, Paul.
Hi.
Paul's been here before.
Yes, a few times.
Yep. So, you want to just tell us about the petition and what it is you're requesting?
Yes. National Grid requests to move one of the poles on Phillips Court because there's new home being built in the corner, Phillips Court and Pleasant Street, which is not too far away from here, and the design of the house puts the garage in front of the existing pole. So, we, the owner of the property requested us to move the pole about 30 feet towards Pleasant Street, and that would provide access for their new garage, and it wouldn't interfere with anything else within his property, so that's what I'm here for.
Okay, and when is the plan to do that, if you get approved?
When is the plan?
Yeah, what, when are you planning on doing that? What's the date?
I don't have a schedule, but typically, it's within about eight weeks, and the house has the foundation right now. They're still building it. I'm not sure how far away they are, but we try to coordinate it.
So, they're at least eight weeks away anyway, so, yeah.
I'll say maybe they're a little further away, but...
Okay, so this is a request from a citizen who is building a home and would like the pole removed from what would be the center of their driveway.
Correct.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yes.
So, okay, do we have any questions from the board?
Not so much a question, but a, but a comment. And I have to say, National Grid was really quite good in the library neighborhood, did a great job of working with the neighbors, however, it looks like a war zone, all the double poles. There's over 30 in about a block and a half radius until I finally had to come to the meeting, I had to stop counting, and they're quite unsightly. We also have an Olmsted Park, which is a famous landscape architect and architect who designed the Patriots Memorial Park, which is also the same designer that designed the Emerald Necklace, the Central Park in New York and others. And surrounding our beautiful park, where we've restored and spent a lot of money, are a lot of double poles. Now, Paul, I know this isn't your fault, but I would certainly motion for this pole to move forward, but I am going to tell you, if you could please get back to the people in your company and tell them that I will not support any other work until you finish the ones that you've started.
Okay.
I hear from neighbors all the time, people are very, very upset. There's a lot of pride in that neighborhood, as there is in many of the neighborhoods in town, but I think every single pole in a block and around our beautiful park, where it's double pole, broken poles, is not, it's not good. So, we need to know when the job is going to be completed, and again, I will not support any more work done by National Grid or any of the other organizations, except for this one, fair warning, until the work gets completed, or with a date certain.
Yeah, what is the, the street address, or, I know it's a park, but...
It's, it's right near the library area. Just take a drive.
Green and West Woodbridge, as an example, there's one that's...
Middlesex.
Yeah, Middlesex.
Very dangerous looking.
Yeah, they're just sort of hanging in suspension.
Our government relations representative is aware of the poles in question.
Yeah, okay.
Isn't the first time it was raised?
Yeah, typically, so you know, there's multiple carriers on these poles, so we have to work together. So, I agree with you, they're not a pleasant sight, but I'll look into it, and I'll have Susan reach out to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks. If you could, yeah, carry that message back. Is there anyone else here to speak either for or against this, or to speak for this petition? Okay, so, the conservation has weighed in, they have no issues. Fire department has weighed in, they have no issues. Police department would just ensure that you have a, an officer on duty when you're doing the work, which I know that's standard procedure for you guys, but just, it's noted in the, in the, in the document from the police department.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Do I have a motion on this request?
Mr. Chairman, move that the Board of Selectmen approve National Grid and Verizon, New England's joint poll petition, 23639542, dash Phillips Court, as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay, moving on, consent items. First on the agenda is Stevens Pond update and 2017 fees. We'll talk, turn it over to Mr. Gorman again.
Great, thank you. You all have a package that we provided, which is a little bit of a timeline on Stevens Pond. I think you're all familiar, it is one of our town treasures, and over the last number of years, we've done a, an outstanding job rehabbing the whole facility, dealing with a lot of issues that came up in the past with the blue-green algae. We're, we're happy to say that in the last two years, we've not even been closed for one hour, which is unusual with all the high E coli and everything, so our, our water has been great. It's a unbelievable facility, and every year, I'm asked to try to take a look at how we can make this a total self-sufficient program, and I'm happy to say, we're getting closer to that every year. Last year, the board, as Rosemary, I've been in front of her for many, many years, we've kept the fees...
Watch the main part.
We've kept the fees at the regular fee, and we're actually closing that gap. So, if you look at my, my two proposals, is to keep it as what our fees were set in 2016 by the board. I also threw out estimates that if we were to increase a couple of the fees, that we could actually close the gap completely, almost. And, you know, my take is that if you've seen the last three years, we've actually closed the gap greatly, and my own personal recommendation is, I think that we should probably keep the fees the way they were last year. Very optimistic, we're going to even have a better year this year, and we can finally get to that zero balance on that. But again, the board sets the fees, and I can discuss either, either proposal, whatever. Again, it's a great facility in our town, and it's being used more and more, and then we're doing some new things this year. We're going to have a, a movie on the, on the pond, Mr. Valencourt, I hope you come down the street, and you can sit in the water in the tube and watch a movie. So, we've got a couple of new creative things we're doing too, and the residents have really fallen apart. We have an outstanding relationship with our Department of Public Works as far as everything from the water quality to making it very presentable down there. So, again, I think it's, it's one of our town treasures, and we're asking you tonight to set the fees, whether it be the existing fees, or if we take a look at any increases.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the existing fees. Thank you very much for working so hard to keep everything in line, and as I've said before, as you, as you have just said, it is a town treasure. My dad learned to swim there, my family learned to swim there, and I think it's very important that our children all know how to swim, save their life, maybe even a little sibling's life when they learn water safety. And for many families in town, that is their vacation. It's their summer vacation. The fireworks, and our 4th of July event, and swimming at Stevie's Pond is their family vacation, and it's, we need to keep it affordable, but I know you've worked really hard. We have this speech every year, and you'll say, Rosemary's going to hold me to the, and I do, and you've done a great job with it, Rick, thank you. It's a really, it's really nice.
Yeah, if you haven't been down there recently, I really encourage the residents to come down and see it. It's, it's really, every year, we've kind of upgraded it, from whether it be new fencing and new landscaping, and it's, it's pretty sharp, so my ultimate goal would be to get that used more than just the eight, nine weeks during the summer, with some other potential things with the winter season, but in terms of the summer, it's a great thing. And to your point, Rosemary, it is for a lot of our families, is, is their Salisbury Beach, it is their Hampton Beach, and the best we can do to keep offering the services we are, I think we need to do that.
So, you're proposing, you're saying we're not raising it?
And how, how many years has it been? It's been quite a few.
I'm sorry?
How many years have we kept it at the same rate? It's been a while.
It's been about eight years it's been kept, the actual fees.
That's great, thank you.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Rick, what, so, I recall seeing this in past years, the seasonal pass for nonprofits and the seasonal pass for profits.
Sure.
I remember, I remember vividly looking at this, and I don't know why I didn't ask this last year, but what, what do those passes mean? Like, what would, what, what type of entity would it be?
So, we have two groups that actually use it, and one is, is a nonprofit, is actually a nonprofit in North Andover youth organization. The for-profit one is Little Sprouts, located off on 114, that actually uses it three days a week to bring their kids down to swim. So, they're a for-profit organization. We've only had two requests. I don't know if that'll ever change. I'd be concerned that we get large groups like that to impact what we're already trying to do there, but those, that's the two differences on that.
Are we, are we still having this, the swim off with the trophies? Are we still doing it?
Oh, yes, LaFawn Insurance and Stachis Pizzas have still been involved, right from the beginning.
Still doing it, wonderful.
LaFawn provides all of the awards, Stachis provides the food, but that's an annual swim meet that was been going on. They have pictures of the 30s and everything doing that.
Since time immemorial, but, yeah, they both, like you said, they both should be commended for that. It's a really fun day for the kids.
We are doing something new this year. We're doing afternoon swimming lessons, so the kids don't have to compete with our summer fun program that don't want, who want to get swimming lessons but don't want to miss the summer fun program. So, it's going to be a little challenge to our staff with the lifeguards, but we're pretty excited to be able to offer swimming lessons in the morning, as well as the afternoon.
The one thing that's great that some families might not realize, it's when they take their children to learn to swim every day, the improvement is unbelievable, versus going to the Y once a week, or whatever. It's just amazing how quickly they improve with their swimming ability. It, I have two kids that are life guards, and, and it's because of programs like that.
If you notice, the one thing I always say is, we probably could go up on the swimming lessons. This is an absolute bargain to learn how to play, to swim. If you went to the Y, you went to another boys' club or whatever, you would pay five times that, but I think that's also the big draw for our families. And remember, we do, we find a way to provide for all families to go. So, we do have a number of people that are on scholarships that we take, and last year, I think we had eight or nine or so that were on full scholarship. We don't want them to miss out on this opportunity because of an inability to pay. So, I think overall, it's, it's a great place, it really is.
And one thing you haven't mentioned, at the end of the season, Mrs. Chessler, lately, the last two or three years, brings our eighth graders down.
The middle school, we actually keep the pond operational in terms of water on in the bathrooms. The middle school has embarked the last three years on doing a kayaking program as part of a team-building aspect with their sixth graders. So, again, it's, what I'm looking at is other uses of the pond throughout the year, so that's actually in the first part of September. So, it's been a great success. She's going to be doing it again. Again, good collaboration with the school department and us, as well as DPW on this to make it happen. We've also had a pole plunge down there, if you remember, two years ago.
Oh, yeah.
So, again, if we can look at that as, it's not going to be a 12-month-a-year facility, but there are some other possibilities we could possibly use that great facility for.
I love the pond, I think it's great.
I love the pond, I think it's great. I, I've watched the progression over the years. I was wondering if there's ever been thought of, you mentioned kayaking, and it made me think of adding some sort of area where the public can bring their own kayak to the side, you know, some other air, launch area close to, obviously not where it was swimming.
So, one of the areas, we have a little bit of problem with space down there. You can get a permit from the town and actually kayak on the lake itself. There are parts, the residents there actually have access to get on there. We're looking at, you know, actually, we, Lori and I talked about a pond, pond or lake that you've gone to, which is actually, we're looking at a possible of actually having a little bit of a fleet, like maybe five or six, where kids can actually rent to use them, and then have a place for our residents to actually put in there too, without impacting the general roped-off area where kids are swimming, the raft, the, the things. But again, it's another thing, is we're looking down the road of how we wanna make it even a bigger place, especially for, like, teenagers, right? So, when they get to the middle school, Stevens Pond gets a little boring. So, if we can actually provide some of those other recreational pieces, I think it just adds to the quality that we're trying to put down there.
Exactly. My other, Rick, my other idea was a basketball hoop. I'm just thinking of some of the other local ponds I've been to, where, you hit the nail on the head, there seems to be a few more things for older kids.
Right.
My kids are kinda, we used to go there a lot when they were toddlers, and now we're kinda inching out of it. And even the playground there is kinda more toddler, at least last time I was there, maybe it's changed, but it was more of a toddler playground.
Right, it's a toddler playground.
Right, so if there is anything that could be added.
You can tell, we are looking at our possibilities, the raft being open all day and not shut down during there, 'cause we have a new supervision thing that we're actually gonna be doing. So, we're trying to cater with that age group a little bit more. It's always been great with the young kids.
Yeah.
But to me, we should be keeping the middle school kids and the early high school kids actively involved down there as much as possible, too.
Yeah.
So, those are, Kelly Ray, our director down there, does a great job. She's got a lot of insight of where she'd like to take it. She grew up there, was a lifeguard, became our assistant director and the director. She's a full-time school teacher now, and, you know, this is her passion on the summer job. So, and again, we get great North End Oval lifeguards. Rosemary's son worked for us. So, again, it's, it's just a great thing that I just think people need to take advantage of a little more.
So, Rick, just one thought. So, but no, we have to purchase those kayaks, right?
Correct.
So, why not get a business, why not suggest businesses sponsor a kayak?
Yeah, I mean, it's...
You know, so, I'm thinking about, you know, maybe put together, you know, obviously not a discussion here for a night, but
Right.
Think about really putting together a, a program that reaches out to businesses here?
Yep.
And say, be a part of launching this, and literally launch, and they've got kayaks.
Yeah, it's a great idea. We've got some other options. We've finally gotten the Joseph N. Herman Youth Center, Inc., to kind of look at being open to grants outside of 33 Johnson Street, which has been a passion of mine. When I'm running a lot of different things in town, I need, I need our nonprofit to look at, you know, that it's more than just the building. So, last year, they bought the new dock down at, at Stevens Pond. My goal was, I'd like to see them buy the six kayaks to start it off, too. But your, your business sponsorship idea is a great idea, too. So, it's not gonna happen in 2017, but we've got a, we've got a plan up to 2020 that would like to make some additions down there.
So, so if we kept the fees the same?
Correct.
I'm looking at last year, it looks like revenues did not quite match expenses. But, so you're saying, because you think there's gonna be increased usage, you'll close that gap?
Yeah, our projections, it was gonna be more in, in increased usage this year, from feedback we've gotten, our active Facebook page on it, as well as the fact that we've seen increases every year with the, remember, you know, 10 years ago, prior to Andrew being it, I mean, the building was being held together by duct tape, I'll be honest with you, and that's, that's not a lie. The, what the town saw was a commitment to really build up this place, and with that, you know, we're seeing the increase coming with that. Remember, the town appropriates a certain amount of money to, to pay for Stevens Pond. My goal ultimately is always be that the town doesn't have to use that money, that it's a self-sufficient business. And starting back, you know, when I first took over this, this was the goal. And, and we're inching closer. I'm usually one here telling Rosemary, "We need to raise the fees."
She goes like this.
When Andrew said last year, "We're closing the gap," I looked at it even closer this year, and we are closing the gap. So, if, if anything, I'm recommending we keep it this year. And, you know, again, if we have rain every day, we're talking a whole different story. But, um, I'm pretty optimistic about this year.
He'll do it. It's a quality of life issue, as you, you know better than me, even since the last year in the room. It's great. You've done a great job with it.
Don, you wanna recommend $0.00 again this year?
He never wanted any increases.
I know, he's always wanted zero, total. Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Is that it for you tonight?
Aye.
You can go now. Okay, next on the agenda, we have a request from Eric Affori to waive the permit fees for the installation of the tent and dance floor at the Stevens Estate. So, the tent and dance floor, obviously a, a major component of the Stevens Estate for hosting weddings throughout the season. Eric, our Director of Economic Community Development, is requesting that we waive the permit fee for installing that, which would be a fee, obviously, that we would pay, the town would pay anyway. So, um, do I have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Patriotic Observance Committee requests permission to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade Ceremony on Monday, May 29, 2017, starting at 10:00 a.m. Do we have anybody from the committee here tonight? Okay?
It's our, you know, our annual Memorial Day Parade. This year, we are doing something a little bit different in, in this regard, that we, um, we are putting together a memorial for all the soldiers, sailors, marines, could be maritimes who didn't make it home, meaning they were shot down over water, they, we lost them at sea, or they're buried in Normandy. So, we'd like a memorial right at the cemetery that would honor all of those who did not make it home. So, what we're asking the public to do is, and this can go back as far as any family might have knowledge of, you know, back to the Revolutionary War, that if you know of anybody who was lost during any of our wars and did not make it home, we'd like to hear from you, and we'd like to, you know, finally honor those people, for those who made the ultimate sacrifice and never actually returned back to home. So, we're putting that message out for people to really put your thoughts about, you know, you might have heard a story from your parent or your grandparent, how they lost a friend or whatever. But, um, so it should be a very meaningful parade. It's not unlike the others that we have, that we're looking for Boy Scout troops, Girl Scout troops, anybody who would like to march is welcome. And just all they have to do is get in touch with our Veteran Service Officer, talk to Christine, I mean, Crystal, excuse me, and about any of this. If they know of someone, we would certainly like to hear from you. We certainly could use another band, like a Drum and Fife type of band, if anyone knows anything like that. So, it should be, hopefully, another nice day. And if it rains, we will be having the event at the middle school.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Does the Board of Selectmen approve the request of the Patriotic Observance Committee to hold the annual Memorial Day Parade on May 29, starting at 10:00 a.m.?
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Always a great cause and a great, a great ceremony, very patriotic. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have a request from Columbia Gas to excavate Maple Street, Maple Ave, Stonington Street, and Dudley Street for the purpose of replacing its gas mains. Good evening. Aye. Good evening, Seattle, construction specialist from Columbia Gas, seeking a petition, like you said, to excavate those streets, to replace approximately 2,600 feet of cast
iron with plastic, twinge plastic. All three streets will be going to high pressure. Involves about 4100, uh, 41 services, and duration's about 80 days, 75 to 80 days.
Starting approximately?
We hope to start mid to late May.
Should take it through the whole summer, pretty much?
Pretty much.
I think we've talked about this before, but the, it's kind of counterintuitive to laypeople, that the, the plastic is actually safer than the cast iron.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Especially the cast iron is probably, the number of years old.
Cast iron is very brittle, very, very brittle.
And ancient, yeah.
Yeah. Anytime the DPW excavates next to cast iron, it becomes a priority to get that section out, because it's been compromised with the, the soil compaction and stuff. So, it can leak. The way it's put together, it's basically like horsehair gaskets, just one piece put into another. So, those move, and the joints move, and the soil's interrupted. And they leak a lot.
Okay.
We don't want that.
And, um, thank you. And just for the Board's edification, there, there is certain amount of replacement that can be done that doesn't have to come to the Board for approval, right? We approved that a few years ago. And then, this one, obviously, is beyond that, and so it comes to the Board.
If it's a service request, four by six, three by five, and typically, I'm signing those, so that, because they were coming in.
Right, new business.
Be pretty regularly, and we're delaying operations. So, if it's a new service to a customer, then we're signing that. If anything beyond the traditional, say, lateral off a new service for a customer, or something that's...
More than three to five, four by six.
Yeah.
Something like this, 1,400 feet, that, that's coming to the Board.
Right, okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
Move that Board of Selectmen approve the request of Columbia Gas to excavate Maple Ave, Stonington Street, and Dudley Street as presented, for the purpose of replacing gas mains.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, tonight we have two donations to accept. First is to accept a donation of $450.81 from the Knights of Columbus to the Police Department for Project Lifesaver. Do I have a motion?
I'll maybe the Board of Selectmen accept the donation from the Knights of Columbus to be used to purchase a transmitter kit and supplies for Rory Callahan as part of Project Lifesaver. Second?
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, thank you to the Knights of Columbus, very generous offer, a very generous donation. Okay, and we have another donation of a Butcher Boy gift certificate in the amount of $350 from Robert Daigle to the Fire Department.
Move approval. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Again, thank you, Mr. Daigle, for that very generous donation, and, and on behalf of the Fire Department, I'm sure they're very happy to get that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, next we have a vote for the maximum useful, useful life of equipment bond authorization. Mr. Manager, I'll turn this one over to you.
Here's a fairly standard request. These are projects that were approved at last town meeting, so the May 10th of 2016 town meeting. And in certain conditions, we're required to get authorization from the Board for voting the useful life. As you can see, they're fairly standard assumption in this case, a dump truck, which is about a five-year piece, we're looking for a five-year useful life. Certain assets, when we purchase some of the state, is very specific as to what the useful life is, and in other cases, asks that we identify that useful life. As a general practice, we're aggressive about paying off our debt service, more aggressive than the law requires, to make sure that we don't get overwhelmed by debt service. So, this is a rather perfunctory request that you'll find when we purchase rolling stock, as opposed to other types of equipment or purchase or build buildings.
Can I ask you this, though? So, if, if it's still in good shape, but beyond, say, the five years, or it just didn't get the mileage, do we change anything on this?
This only has to do with the length of time we're paying the debt back, if you see what I mean.
Okay, okay.
So, you're trying to sync it with the life of whatever it is?
Yeah. And again, we try to be more aggressive than what the useful life is allowed for in terms of paying it back. So, in a case like, again, a six-wheel dump truck, five years is, is probably close. We may get seven years, eight years out of it, but we wouldn't want to extend that and pay it back over 10 years, 'cause obviously, for more likely to replace it.
Yep.
Okay, so, any other questions? Would move, make a motion? Anybody would have a motion for me?
Move approval.
Motion, do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Oh.
I'm gonna read it fast.
Move the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, it's gotta be the...
I move the Board of Selectmen vote
There you go.
That the maximum useful life of the transfer of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed within the proceeds of the $633,197 borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed May 10, 2016, Article 24, lines 8, 10, and 15, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, C. 44, comma, 7, parentheses, 1, to be as follows. Purpose is ambulance, borrowing amount 268,197, maximum useful life 10 years. Equipment sweeper, $185,000, maximum useful life 10 years. And six-wheel dump truck, $180,000, maximum useful life 5 years.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, we are on to licensing. Do I have a motion to go into licensing?
Motion to move into licensing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're now in licensing.
We are in licensing. So, the first item on this evening's agenda is that...
We may need this.
We may, yes. There's a wild crowd. So, the first item on the agenda this evening is a request from the Cork Stop. Some folks may remember that we had approved, our town meeting at a prior year approved a license request of the state. So, this evening, we have Attorney Vaughn with representatives of the Cork Stop here this evening to talk about their transfer from a malt, excuse me, from beer and wine to a full liquor license. Correct?
Correct. Yeah, it was approved at town meeting last year for, to amend their, their license. And so, it took a while for it to get through the process with the state, for the state to approve the special act. So, now that that's done, it's just a perfunctory matter, sort of, I guess, of applying for the amendment of the license, so that it would no longer be limited to just beer and wine, but that it would be extended to all alcohol.
Now, any questions from the Board?
Just, just a informational, are there any added responsibilities or other things that come with that when we grant this license?
No, it's just, the, the town is limited to six licenses. And unfortunately, the way our state law is written, we are not allowed to distribute extra licenses beyond our limitations.
Right. And, and the only, the only difference is, is just, they're both a Section 15 license, it's called, which references to the statute, which is for off-premises consumption. So, it's retail sale for off-premises consumption. And the current license, current license was limited only to wine and malt. The only difference is what alcohol they're allowed to sell. They're subject to the exact same standards in terms of, of, you know, process and, you know, ID and, and everything else. It's just, the only distinction is, is what license, what, what type of alcohol they're allowed to sell. And so, now there'd be no restriction.
And this one won't be transferable to another property, correct? This is one that will only apply to this address.
Correct, 'cause it was approved by special acts specifically for this location.
And it comes without any type of concerns from building police or fire? Any additional questions for the applicants?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of Cork Stop to go from wine and malt to a full liquor license.
Second that?
Motion made seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing all opposed, non-opposed. It passes. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
So, the next item on the agenda is, we have three pieces from Smolak Farms. Don't know if anybody is in the audience this evening from Smolak, but I did get a call from George McCabe, who is the vendor that typically provides the liquor services, or the, the serving services to Smolak events. He is the provider for all three of these. And so, we have no comments from building police, fire, et cetera. I would be willing to entertain a motion for all three, because all three are at Smolak Farms and fall within the window that we have for special events for Smolak Farms, or we could take them separately.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of all three requests from Smolak Farms.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, non-opposed? It passes. The next item is a request from Dolly Miller to renew the fortune teller license for psychic readings at 163 Turnpike Street. Now, I see Dolly is coming up, and you can come up absolutely and speak. It's a renewal, but it's always good to see a local business owner. And, how are you, Dolly?
Good.
If you wanna tell us a little bit about your business, I know you've been in town for a while.
Well, it's basically tarot card and palm readings. I've been doing that for a while. It's mostly about festival, that's my big thing. I don't get, like, a lot of clientele throughout the month. It's mostly, like, festivals is my thing. So, I would like renewal.
Great. And you just saw a lot of events with the North End of Emergence associated with that.
But I got two little ones, so they can be busy, too, so...
Yeah, you can't predict that. Any questions from the Board?
Nope. Move approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck with your business, Dolly. That is the end of the licensing agenda. Do I hear a motion to move out of licensing?
Mr. Chair, go ahead. Someone else, go ahead.
I move that we close the meeting of the licensing commission.
I'll second that.
Took a lot for me to hold up on that one, Donny saying whether or not she already knew what was going on. That's, Don, every year, we do that same joke. Yeah, whether you, it's true, you know. Okay.
It'll always be a job.
Old business, none, new business, none. Public comment? Still no public comment tonight? I heard you, I know, I'm watching it. Okay, Town Manager's Report. You have six minutes, if you'd like.
It's great. I've provided you with 10 reports, as you probably know, for the folks that are new and may not. On a meeting or every other meeting basis, we include certain monthly reports on data from various departments, everything from the library to the senior center, to the status of our legal bills, Fire Department, an opiate report that we started now, close to three years ago, job vacancy logs, so you know what's going on in terms of any open positions that, that may be posted and we're looking to fill. And status of building department fees, list the lodger... and we're looking to fill, and status of building department fees, list the larger items that were brought in in terms of, from a revenue perspective, gives you some sense of what's going on around the community. It won't necessarily include every kitchen or bath or other modest improvement, but it gives you a sense of the larger items that we're dealing with from a building perspective, also gives you a status of where we stand from revenue against budget in terms of building, which we've, the last two years tracked ahead of. We've had a couple of big, big building permits, as an example, over the last couple of years, that has brought us several hundred thousand dollars over that. But we have nothing in the pipeline to bring that up further through the end of the year, but, but overall, we're certainly tracking positively to that. Next meeting, I'll provide you with a quarterly finance update, which gives you an idea of where we stand on revenues to date and expenses to date. Summary will be expenses are around three-quarters spent, which you'd expect them to be through three-quarters of the year, and revenues are tracking at or above estimates with a couple of exceptions, but nothing that's, that's going to sidetrack us in terms of our ability to make the end of the year. The one exception on the expenses is our nine-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar snow and ice deficit, but we'll be seeking with Lynn Savages' support, transfer of money between various accounts to make sure that we're able to close that gap without using other reserves or impact services through the end of the year. So, you'll see that as the year gets close to the end.
Any money potentially coming in from the state on that?
No.
Probably not.
Typically, the state, any state reimbursement for snow and ice is typically surrounding state of emergency, commonly now linked to blizzards if there's federal funding. So, unless it's designated as a blizzard, the worst thing in the world for us is a whole bunch of three-to-five-in-storms, because they actually cost more in terms of snow removal, and we don't receive any funding. So, we're not expecting any federal state funding.
One question.
Yes.
Legal summary, because there was some discussion about the scope of legal services that are being provided, because we're in-house counsel. And just sitting through the Planning Board meeting last week, it was eye-opening to see the value of having somebody who's part of our team, really, there. I just didn't know if that showed up in the, how that showed up in the budget or in the accounting there.
Yep, there's two aspects of, so, the references to In-House Counsel Suzanne Egan, who was hired in, I think, the first full month, we're showing that as November. So, if you look on the spreadsheet we provide in terms of a status of legal spending to date, about six or seven lines from the bottom, it says "in-house counsel", and there's an amount placed in there, that's her salary for the month. If you recall, the school department was funding, in essence, forty percent of her salary, the town sixty percent. So, that's incorporated into that spreadsheet, so that you get a, so when we're comparing one year to the next, you actually get to see Suzanne's salary as well. We don't want to leave that out. So, what you see into, in the spreadsheet is Suzanne's salary. That piece, which is borne by the Selectmen side of the legal bills. Understood?
Good.
One report I find interesting is the reported report. The number of items that are reported through that application and the resolve, we're at about a ninety percent resolution level for the month, the month. We had fifty-four items reported, fifty resolved. I, I find it interesting, because I point people to that report all the time, that, that webpage all the time, to report issues. I mean, I've used it a number of times specifically for having a light bulb changed in a, in a streetlight, which I think was, within three or four days, it was changed. So, I really encourage people to, to use that as a method of, of reporting issues, and, and obviously, we see the data, and we, we see how that is, how those are resolved. And so, it's a good thing to have.
I agree. I used it the other day, and something was resolved within less than twenty-four hours. But I just had a question on the, the trash and recycling.
Yes.
Wine item on that report.
Yes.
I know it's been discussed in meetings before, and I know there was an issue with the fact that TBI or another entity was responsible for contracting to get that picked up. Is that still deemed to be an issue? Yes, it's, what's the status of that?
We, we're currently using Northside Carding. We're under contract with Northside Carding for the trash that runs through the end of August. On September one, we'll be transferring to JRM to handle trash. Our recycling happens to be handled by the same contractor, but not under the same kind of agreement. That's an agreement between the town, from a broader sense, and Thompson Brothers Incorporated, TBI on Holt Road, and as part of that agreement, signed, you know, a decade-plus ago, they would have provided recycling service. They happen to use Northside. So, what will change on September one is that the trash will be picked up by JRM, but the recycling will likely continue to be picked up by Northside.
And is there some thing we can do about Northside's? I remember there was a discussion that they use one truck, maybe they can't get the whole neighborhood, so then they go back the next day, and so coming back, and resulted in some streets being missed consistently. Are, are we addressing that with TBI to say, can you-
We're addressing it, but we haven't reached a resolution on it. Yeah, we haven't had much success in reaching a resolution on the recycling side of things, which is typically, appears to be largely a delay in certain sections of the Wednesday route into Thursday, and certain sections of the Thursday route pushed by the Wednesday route into Friday.
What's, what's the, I get picked up on Monday, I'm not, I'm receiving-
Quality service.
I'm receiving community comments. I don't personally have an issue with my own. But I was just curious, then, do we have, what's like the timeline of our contracts with TBI, where we could maybe-
Great question. So, the, what's different about, and feel free to stop me, is this a little, the, the TBI relationship and the Northside relationship as it relates to recycling is, if not unique, unusual. So, it was the result of the discussion of what would happen with the site on Holt Road. So, the agreement has no end date. It simply was an exchange, a part of an exchange for citing the facility on Holt Road, and that was exchanged in part for recycling service. And so, the contract, without getting too deep into it, the, the contract is not your traditional vendor contract, as it would be with some vendors, and it does not have an end date. It runs with the citing of that facility on Holt Road. Other things, right. So, so we certainly will continue to strive with work, to work with Northside to get them to improve or address the concerns. One of the challenges we've had is that it's not a traditional vendor contract that could have a thirty-day and out, or an expiration, some level. It's one of the challenges.
But they do business with other communities, right?
Logically, no.
No.
That was, they, they certainly did, I had Northside Carding with success, quite frankly, in the previous community I was in, some years ago. They, they had a reasonable sort of north, you know, north of Boston presence in Massachusetts. We are the only Massachusetts community currently being served on a municipal waste perspective by Northside. When we switch to JRM, they will no longer, unless they add clients, they will no longer be doing that kind of work, trash pickup for any community in Massachusetts. They do serve a couple of southern New Hampshire communities, both for recycling and I believe for trash. I haven't checked recently, but I know they, they had some services that way.
All right, so, so kind of the quality of the relationship that they have with us doesn't necessarily affect other communities, so you don't have that lever in the same degree?
No.
The agreement does say, though, that if they don't rectify a situation within thirty days, we have recourse, correct?
Yeah, and I, and I hope you understand, I, I don't want to get too deep into sort of our position on some of the contractual language, but, but using, except the, one example of that, and I'm not an attorney, if I have a trash problem today and it's resolved tomorrow, is that thirty days? It just gets into the question of whether or not, if you repeatedly do that, you're in violation of the contract. So, it's complicated because it's part of a host agreement. Certainly, the value to the community was for years, we received recycling at no cost, which is extremely unusual. Currently, the service level certainly isn't to our hope and expectations, and we're hoping over time that improves, and maybe focusing just on the recycling will help do that. On a parallel, not to distract from the conversation, but I forgot it under communication, May eighth begins our, is it May fifteenth, begins our curbside textile recycling program? I forgot to mention that in communication, but we'll start communicating with residents fairly aggressively about that. So, we continue to certainly ask folks to communicate with us. You see from the bars here, trash and recycling, you know, rivals, trees and snow, right? The snow will go away next month, and we'll be down to probably trees and trash and recycling, and we're certainly aware of that, and I would say the majority of the trash and recycling reported concerns are around the recycling area, not around the trash area. I sense it's going to be, become more pronounced beginning of September, not less, because you'll be able to distinguish between the pieces of equipment. So, either you'll know your trash was not picked up, you know, the trucks are going to look different, right? So, I think, one way or another, I think that's going to become more pronounced as time goes on. And I would also comment that in April, with the transition we've had in Public Works, Jim Stanford is doing a great job, but he's transitioning into a role. I've noticed in the last couple of days that some of the length of response and report is a little longer than I'd like. That's just someone coming in, getting used to the system, getting used to what our, because we grew this ourselves, right? This is not something you, you bought off a can somewhere. Chris McClure is the, was the author of this, so getting new folks sometimes into the shop and getting used to what our expectations are, takes a bit. So, be patient, everybody, if you've submitted a request, and it's a few days longer than twenty-four hours, because in some cases, we talked a little bit about it today to make sure we get back on that and try to drill those responses down.
Do we have, like, service level agreements or SLAs for different categories of items? Like, let's say, a, a streetlight outage or something like that?
Yeah, streetlights, we do, because they're part of a, a third-party contract with a company that does all our streetlight maintenance. So, in cases like streetlights, very clear in the contract that anything reported by a certain day of the week must be fixed within seven days. Certain other requirements, you know, if you look at some of these, that's the detail we do, I was looking at the mapping, I'm a geographic learner, so all this stuff appears on a map in my office, which is great for me, because I see it from that perspective. One of the difficulties is you can get what appear to be two of the same requests, say, a pothole request, maybe not the best example, or a tree service request, and those may be dramatically different service requests. And so, they do take someone to go out there and take a look and make sure they, they understand the concern. And the great part about our Public Works, and certainly the senior staff and labor staff, is they go out, they look at the particular incident, they understand what that circumstance is, because even some that may appear in a chart here as the same, they're probably not the same. The streetlight is an example where they're almost always the same. There's only so many moving parts in a streetlight. There's a baluster, there's a photocell, there's the lamp. So, when the company comes, they have all three parts, they take it up, they fix the part, and they move on.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, so our next meeting is May eighth, tentatively? Why is that, why is tentative? That's how it was?
Yeah, we, we found ourselves sort of in-between when we would traditionally meet, because we do meet the hour before town meeting, so it'll largely be a function of whether or not the Board sees that there is other sort of pre-town meeting work that may be required. Sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't. There's at least one item we haven't yet taken action on, and whether or not that's going to require some level of debate or, or not. And so, we've left open, because normally, May eighth may be a fairly light agenda, so you have to decide if you want to proceed with the May eighth, or whether or not this time before the town meeting on May sixteenth to conduct the meeting to, you know, conduct your business. That's, that's the point of tentative. So, I think maybe we wait a couple of days and see what happens in terms of any indications that this folks are going to be on to the agenda, and then I'll feed that back to you, Mr. Chairman, and if you feel like a May eighth meeting is necessary to make sure we're not overwhelmed on May sixteenth before town meeting, then, then you can make that call.
That sounds good. Okay. So, motion to adjourn? All right, wow. That's the slowest motion to adjourn I've ever had in all these years. I don't know what's changed.
How many years it took me to get Dawn in line?
All those in favor? Okay, right. We stand adjourned, thank you.